Good afternoon and welcome to today's New York City Council hearing for the Committee on Higher Education. At this time, we ask that you silence all cell phones and electronic devices to minimize disruptions throughout the hearing. If you have testimony you would like to submit for the record, you may do so via email at Once again, that is testimony@council.nyc.gov. We thank you for your cooperation, Chair. We are ready to begin.
I'm Councilmember Eric Dinowitz, Chair of the Committee on Higher Education. Welcome to our Oversight Hearing on CUNY's Accelerated Study in Associate Programs Initiative, also known as ASAP. It's fitting that we're having this hearing in April, which is Community College Month nationwide, and therefore a great time to celebrate the work of CUNY's community colleges. We look forward in this hearing to learning more about the ASAP Initiative, which is offered at six community colleges and three senior colleges, as well as more about the evaluative data that both CUNY and well-respected external evaluators have collected and used to judge the success of ASAP. As always, we're interested in the way that ASAP is advertised and promoted to potential CUNY students. You know that I believe it's always about getting the word out. We're also interested in the selection process used to decide which campuses will operate ASAP, as well as the selection process used to identify and enroll individual students. The demographic data for enrolled students, including gender, race, ethnicity, and income level, are all relevant here. Furthermore, the committee is concerned, as usual, in learning how students with disabilities are accommodated in ASAP. Finally, the committee also seeks an understanding of what support CUNY needs to extend ASAP, both to other campuses and to more students at each campus. At our February hearing, I said that it is not often in education that we find a program that has no downsides, no trade-offs, no drawbacks. At the time, I was talking about CUNY's college preparation initiatives for middle and high school students, and how they demonstrably improved the status quo for everyone involved: for the students, for their families, and for their teachers and administrators, both at their public secondary schools and at CUNY. And now, I'm about to say the same thing for ASAP. From what I've read so far and from the data I've looked at, I just do not see any downside to ASAP and to the support that it provides to students. That support includes the following: financial support, including tuition waivers for students whose financial aid does not cover all of their tuition expense; textbook assistance; and free Metro cards; structured academic pathways to keep students on track for graduation, including block scheduling for their first-year courses; immediate and continued enrollment in developmental courses when needed; and courses available and encouraged to be taken during the winter and summer breaks; and personal support services, including personal advisement, tutoring, and career services. I mean, this is what college should be for all students. In fact, the big question is, why don't we just call this "college"? I want to acknowledge that we've been joined by Councilmember Barron, member of the Higher Education Committee. I'd also like to thank Adam Starapoli, my Director of Legislation, Jenna Klaus, my Chief of Staff, Christina Yalamati, the Committee's Counsel, Regina Paul, the Committee's Policy Analyst, and Nia Hyatt, the Committee's Senior Finance Analyst. I would like to remind everyone who wishes to testify in person today that you must fill out a witness slip, which is located on the desk of the Sergeant-at-Arms near the entrance of this room. Please fill out this slip even if you have already registered in advance that you will be testifying in person today. To allow as many people as possible to testify, public testimony will be limited to three minutes per person, whether you are testifying in person or on Zoom. I'm also going to ask my colleagues to limit their questions and comments to five minutes. Please note that witnesses who are here, in person, will testify before those who are signed into the Zoom webinar. Now, in accordance with the rules of the Council, I would like to call the CUNY administration up and then administer the oath. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this committee, and to respond honestly to Councilmembers' questions? Thank you. Thank you. And as a reminder to all of our witnesses, please state your name prior to the testimony for the record.
Good morning, or good afternoon. My name is Alicia Maria Albero, and good morning, Chairperson Dinowitz and members of City Council Higher Education Committee. Thank you for this great opportunity to speak to you today about CUNY's Accelerated Study in Associate Programs, better known as ASAP. I am a Vice Chancellor in CUNY's Office of Academic Affairs, and I am joined today by my fellow colleagues Christine Brawnyard, University Director of ASAP and ACE, and Carrie Manifold, Interim Assistant Dean for Advisement at Kingsborough Community College. I appreciate the opportunity to reiterate some of the information that you have already stated and expand upon it. So founded in 2007 with support from New York City Center for Economic Opportunity, ASAP aims to graduate at least 50% of associate degree-seeking students within three years. At the time the program was launched, CUNY's overall three-year community college graduation rate was 13%, just shy of the national urban community college graduation rate of 16%. CUNY believed that not only could we do better, but we had a moral imperative to do so, and with the support of then-Mayor Bloomberg, CUNY created a comprehensive model designed to improve completion outcomes. ASAP has consistently not only met, but also exceeded its ambitious graduation goals. To date, ASAP has served more than 88,000 students across 16 cohorts, and has an average three-year graduation rate of 53% versus 25% for similar students not in ASAP. The program benefits all subgroups of students, and based on CUNY's analysis, narrows existing equity gaps for Black and Hispanic males. The program grew from an initial enrollment of 1,132 students across six community colleges to a maximum annual enrollment of 25,000 students across nine of our 10 associate-degree-granting colleges. Gutman Community College is excluded because the Gutman model incorporates many of the elements of ASAP. Thanks to the generous support from the city and state of New York, who have supported the program's expansion over the years, ASAP students currently comprise approximately 42% of the full-time associate-degree-seeking population. To give you a snapshot of the ASAP population this academic year, the mean age of an ASAP student is 21, 52% of the population is female, and 48% male. 83% of ASAP students receive Pell or TAP, and their ethnic diversity reflects that of our general college population. 50% are Latinos, 25% are Black, 11% are Asian, and 7% are white. ASAP offers a robust package of resources and services designed to help students gain and maintain academic momentum and create a connected community of staff and peers. ASAP financial resources include tuition and fee gap scholarships for students in receipt of financial aid, textbook assistance, and unlimited New York City Transit Metro Cards. Students make a commitment to pursue their education full-time, which is facilitated through strategic and variable course offerings designed to accommodate a variety of schedules. ASAP also encourages and provides financial support for winter and summer course-taking, and requires immediate and continuous enrollment in corequisite courses as needed. Integrated support services provided by the program include comprehensive and personalized advisement, tutoring, and supplemental instruction, career development services, and early pre-maticulation engagement opportunities to build a connected community. ASAP has garnered national recognition, most notably winning the Innovations in American Government Award from the ASH Center for Democratic Governance and Innovation at Harvard University's John F. Kennedy School of Government in 2020, and has come to be replicated in 11 institutions across six states. ASAP has also been well-researched. MDRC, a research organization created by the Ford Foundation and a group of federal agencies, has stated that ASAP's effects are the largest it has found in any of its evaluations of community college reforms. They go on to state that the model offers a highly promising strategy to markedly accelerate credit accumulation and increase graduation rates among educationally and economically disadvantaged populations. Just this week, Undersecretary James Cavall acknowledged ASAP as a proven model that will be supported through the DOE's next funding round of the Post-Secondary Student Success Grant Program. ASAP was also the subject of a comprehensive cost-benefit analysis led by Doctors Henry Levin and Emma Garcia of the Center for Benefit-Cost Studies in Education at Teachers College, Columbia University. The first part of their analysis revealed that despite higher upfront costs, the average cost per three-year ASAP graduate was lower than for comparison group graduates. The study found an average savings of $6,500 per graduate. The second part of their analysis looked at the benefits of timely graduation, both for the individual and the public sector, by examining increased earnings and tax revenues, and reduced costs for social services such as public health, public assistance, and criminal justice. The study found that investment in ASAP has significant financial returns for both the taxpayer and the student. For every dollar invested in ASAP by the taxpayer, $3.50 are returned, I wish it were $3,000, per associate degree conferred, in the form of increased tax revenues and social service savings. For each dollar invested by the ASAP student, $12.20 are returned through increased earnings. The researchers concluded the total net benefits for 1,000 ASAP students are $46.5 million higher than for 1,000 comparison group students who did not enroll in ASAP. Based on these statistics, the 88,000 students ASAP has served translates to $4 billion 92 million in net benefits.
That's a real number.
Yes, that's a real number, yeah. Another way of characterizing the return on investment is that the $3,463 cost per student represents a 25%, goodness, me and my thousands, a 25% increased investment in each student above the average cost per student, and it generates a 112% improvement in the graduation rate. So the rate of improvement is 4.5 times greater than the increase in cost. This is three to four times greater than we see in nationwide studies of community college investments. Arguably, ASAP is considered a unilateral success, but we recognize that this does not mean we cannot and should not strive for more. Approximately 40% of associate degree students are in the program. What can we do to capture more students? What is standing in their way? Are any of those obstacles within our control? The average age of ASAP students is 21, yet almost 30% of associate degree-seeking students are 25 and over, and adults returning to school continue to be an increasing population in community colleges. Can we use advances in technology and advisement tools to help increase three-year graduation rates beyond 53%? We highlight these issues because we want to assure you that we are continuously striving to achieve maximum success with the generous support the city and state currently provides, and we are continuously working to set the stage for growth and expansion of our success. To place our efforts into context, an additional $3,463,000 would enable us to pilot expansion programs to target an additional 1,000 students while ensuring the quality and impact of ASAP's success does not waver. An additional $126,240,556 would be required to include all CUNY community college students. I conclude by stating that ASAP is part of CUNY's proud legacy of being a powerful engine of social mobility. We are deeply committed to ensuring that all of our students have every opportunity to achieve their educational goals and increase their social mobility. Thank you for your time and unwavering continued support and commitment, and with that, I turn it over to my colleague.
Okay, that works better. Thank you very much. Good afternoon. Thank you to the committee for calling this special session on CUNY ASAP. My name is Christine Brawnyard. I have the distinct honor of serving as the University Executive Director of ASAP and ACE over the past five years. I am pleased to speak with you today about CUNY ASAP, a program that has made a profound and transformational impact on thousands of CUNY associate degree-seeking students, and has been embraced as the gold standard in evidence-based interventions by local, state, and federal policymakers. A critical part of CUNY ASAP's success is its operational structure. ASAP operates as a consortium in which the CUNY Office of Academic Affairs and the nine partner colleges each have a specific set of roles and responsibilities that maximize program success and efficiencies. Each college has a fully dedicated ASAP program team led by a director, who oversees an associate director, a team of advisors, each of whom have a maximum caseload of 150 students, a career specialist, and other program support staff. College teams spearhead recruitment, deliver direct services to students, support program integration with other units at the college, and monitor student data. The ASAP ACE Central Office Team directs key administrative activities, such as marketing and citywide outreach, fiscal oversight, research evaluation, data management, and program-wide staff training and professional development. The program is deeply committed to the use of data for evaluation and program management purposes, and operates on a continuous improvement model. Staff across the program work toward a common set of benchmarks to help reach overall program graduation goals, and use a standard homegrown data management system to produce reports and run queries to measure program efficacy at all levels. We meet regularly within and across various communities of practice, for example, with our program directors or career specialists, across the continuum to discuss and address common challenges, review data, and share best practices. All colleges are aligned around a set of standard student performance and program contact or engagement benchmarks. Student-level data is pulled from CUNY's official data systems and ASAP's own database, and they're assessed on a timed basis and include enrollment, semester-to-semester college and program retention, academic performance data, such as credits attempted and earned, GPA, contact with advisors, both frequency and modality, as well as contact with other program staff, participation in career development activities, and lastly, of course, graduation outcomes. Beyond the program's core goal, focused on completion, the program also monitors other longer-term outcomes. Most ASAP graduates, 93%, enroll in a bachelor's degree within one year of earning their associate degree. When longer-term completion outcomes are considered, ASAP students are more likely to earn a degree. Six years after beginning, 64% of ASAP students have earned either an associate or baccalaureate degree or both, versus 43% of comparison group students. We also continue to explore employment and earnings outcomes of our ASAP students. Based on an analysis of our earliest cohorts, 71% of ASAP graduates were employed in New York State one year after graduating with their associate degree, and 82% of ASAP graduates who went on to attain their bachelor's degree were employed in New York State one year after graduation, which is slightly higher than CUNY's overall rate. We continue to pursue analyses of earnings and wage data in order to deepen our understanding of long-term labor market outcomes, particularly for students in our more recent cohorts, as the program shifted to include most majors. Our in-house analyses are further validated by more rigorous external evaluations, most notably MDRC's five-year random assignment study of ASAP, which found the program's effects as unparalleled in large-scale experimental evaluations of programs in higher education, with nearly double the graduation rate for similar students. In a follow-up study of the random assignment study cohort six years after program entry, MDRC found that ASAP both continues to increase graduation rates and enables some students to earn their degrees faster than they would have otherwise. In addition to continually building ASAP's evidence base, another key function of the ASAP ACE Central Office Team is to spearhead broad citywide outreach and marketing to ensure that as many prospective CUNY students are aware of the program's supports as possible. ASAP is a post-maticulation program, so our integrated marketing strategy aims to increase program awareness to support the program's enrollment goals, as well as the universities. ASAP employs standard marketing strategies like direct mail, two-way texting, and social media marketing. The program also collaborates closely with other CUNY partners, such as the Office of K-16 Initiatives and pre-maticulation programs such as CUNY Start, as well as with various offices within the Department of Education, and with a broad swath of community-based organizations. We also run print advertising campaigns. Some of you may have already come into contact with our current campaign now running across the MTA. The campaign highlights ASAP program benefits and runs parallel to a university campaign further highlighting CUNY's affordability. As a student accepts their offer of admission to one of our CUNY ASAP partner colleges, they are then actively engaged by our local college-based recruitment staff. College recruitment efforts are also supported by our ASAP Ambassador Program, which is a program-wide student leadership development experience that adds capacity to the college's recruitment efforts. ASAP sets ambitious enrollment targets each year and broadly recruits new students as they are admitted to CUNY partner colleges, or we recruit currently enrolled or continuing students who meet the program's eligibility criteria. Students are recruited in both the fall and the spring until each college reaches their full enrollment capacity. To be ASAP-eligible, students must be eligible for New York City resident tuition at our community colleges, or New York State resident tuition at our comprehensive colleges; agree to study full-time in an ASAP-approved associate major. By full-time study, we mean a minimum of 12 credits a semester, preferably 15, and a few majors that have degree pathways that prohibit completion in three years are excluded from eligibility. Students must have completed the FAFSA or TAP application. Students must apply for financial aid each year and accept any need-based grant aid offered. And finally, if a continuing or transfer student, they must have no more than 21 college credits and a minimum GPA of 2.0. ASAP has met and exceeded our expansion goals in academic year 2018, 2019, and 2019, 2020, serving approximately 25,500 students both years. Due to the disruptions of the pandemic and compounded by the enrollment challenges across both CUNY and community colleges nationwide, ASAP has seen modest declines in enrollment over the past three academic years. This year, the program has supported 20,309 unique students. 10,752 new students were recruited across both this last fall and spring. All ASAP programs are actively recruiting for the coming fall, and we fully intend to hit our enrollment target of 25,000 students in this coming academic year. This requires ASAP to recruit 14,000 new students, which, based on our analysis, means we need to successfully recruit 60% of the eligible population. To further elaborate on the way the program is operationalized locally, I'll turn now to my colleague, Dr. Carrie Manifold.
Thank you, Christine. Hi, and thank you for the opportunity to be here today. Need a little louder? There we go. Thank you so much. My name is Carrie Manifold, and I'm the Interim Assistant Dean for Academic Advisement at Kingsborough Community College. I joined the Kingsborough team when the ASAP program launched in 2007 as an academic advisor, and since then, I've held roles as the associate director, the director, and having spent 15 years in higher education, I am passionate about the community college mission, its commitment to diversity, and how it provides opportunity for lifelong learning for underserved populations. In my role as the interim assistant dean, I oversee college-wide academic advisement, transfer services, and student support services. I also manage several student success programs and departments, including the ASAP program, CUNY Start Math Start, our transfer services, and the college advisement academies. Our advisement academy is a major discipline-based program that allows students to explore different majors while they're making a decision, while working with an academic advisor to make informed decisions as they're deciding what to do next. All of this work allows me to contribute to the student's success, our retention, and our graduation for all Kingsborough students. Since joining the ASAP program, I've seen the program grow to serve over 2,000 students each year, providing comprehensive financial and academic support, from 247 when the program first launched back in 2007. Throughout all of that, the team has remained committed to providing services to the whole student, and by that, I mean, we're looking at all of the financial challenges, academic challenges, any responsibilities that a student might have outside of the classroom that could impact how they perform academically. And our academic advisors are committed to helping students overcome those burdens and make sure that they're on track to graduation. As the ASAP program grew, we've grown to represent a significant percentage of the college student population. Between 2015 and 2019, the ASAP program, our program at Kingsborough, we grew from representing 15% of our first-time freshman students to now representing 35%. The program has continued to grow and support even more students to graduation. Kingsborough ASAP students' three-year graduation rate during our expansion period was, on average, 22% higher than the college non-ASAP-supported student graduation rate. Understanding students and building sustained relationships with them is the foundation of the ASAP model. It is what has helped our team to continue to support our students to achieve their goals. In my current role, I have been focused on implementing an academic advisement model that offers consistent advisement to all students, regardless of which advisement program they're being supported by. Until recently at Kingsborough, only our first semester students were required to receive academic advisement, to decide their program of study, and to select courses. In the past year, I've worked to implement ASAP best practices in providing individualized and timely and comprehensive academic support for our students, all underpinned by real-time student-level data to support student engagement, retention, and graduation. One critical tool that ensures that student-level real-time data is at the center of our advisement practice is our Starfish Early Alert System. Starfish collects data from our student management system, faculty, staff, and it allows us to intervene if a student needs assistance. It connects our students to a network of faculty, advisors, and student support staff, and it allows students to communicate with that network if they need any support. It also allows our faculty members to alert advisors if a student is having difficulty in a class, so that we can intervene in a timely manner. Knowing when a student is having difficulty in a class is key, because the advisors can intervene very quickly to be able to help students to continue to stay on track. It's one of the... Starfish supports all areas of our college advisement by seamlessly connecting our faculty to our advisor and vice versa. I've served as the functional lead for Starfish at Kingsborough since its implementation in 2019, and over that time, I've seen the college advisement community come closer to developing a student advisement model that values and highlights all aspects of the student's experience inside and outside of the classroom. The central tenet of the ASAP program: paying attention to what's happening to the student, not just when they're in the classroom, but what's happening outside. Additionally, we've incorporated several ASAP-like comprehensive support services across the college's general advisement, from introducing students to tutoring early to introducing early career planning and transfer planning, and also promoting access to a financial aid counselor early so that students can navigate any of those challenges. Tracking and documenting advisor or advisee engagement has been the cornerstone of the ASAP model, and introducing technology to the larger Kingsborough community to appropriately connect with students has been key to providing timely support for all students. At Kingsborough, we're committed to drawing on the best practices of ASAP to promote a culture shift, not just in our academic advisement practice, but also in how we support students to graduation. Through data, relationship-building, and adaptable technology, we're confident that all advising areas at Kingsborough can improve the student experience and outcomes, such as engagement, retention, and graduation. That concludes my testimony. Thank you so much for your time, and we look forward to your questions.
Thank you so much for your testimony. I want to announce we've been joined by Councilmember Gail Brewer, the one, the only. I'm hoping you can clarify something for me, because I sort of heard both things in the testimony, I mean, I think everyone here agrees, more students should be in ASAP. I heard that we need more funding in order to ensure that we have ASAP for everyone. I heard about a cap that we, I don't know the exact quote, but you recruit students until you meet the cap of full enrollment capacity?
Yes.
But that you're also recruiting students? I mean, can you talk a little bit more about what the balance is between recruiting students, what your cap actually is at the colleges where it is, and if you ever even turn students away from the program?
Sure, I can speak to that.
Thank you.
I can certainly speak to that as well. So we establish our enrollment targets based on capacity, and we determine that based on our primary caseload ratio. So we have a certain allocation for our professional advisement staff to maintain that 1 to 150 caseload. to maintain that 1 to 150 caseload ratio. And as such, every college then will maximize their enrollment to ensure that every advisor does not exceed that caseload ratio of 150. So, that's essentially how the budget is constructed for each college program. They have an allocation for personnel. That, that caseload ratio is kind of the centerpiece of that, and the enrollment targets are then year-to-year established based on graduation, attrition, retention. And as students move out of the program, we refill or backfill with new students in those incoming cycles. We recruit, we recruit both in the fall and in the spring cycle.
And do you have a waiting list? I mean, are students turned, I mean, it sounds necessarily like they have to be turned away from this wonderful program if you only have capacity for the, the 1 to 150 ratio?
So, in our, in our height of enrollment health, certainly was a first-come, first-served basis. Students who were enrolled, who accepted their offer of admission at our partner college, were recruited actively, were committed to the program. They essentially claimed their spot. So, we did then have a little bit of room then to recruit in that following spring. So, we always ensured that we captured those students who were interested in that following cycle. I think because of the enrollment health, as of late, we haven't had that, that challenge necessarily. But again, you know, I think that we are always looking at that, that caseload ratio as being the kind of litmus to how much we can support students or the enrollment target per college.
Right, though, given that this program retains students at college, I, I would imagine part of your enrollment challenge is that students aren't staying. And if they were enrolled in ASAP, then they might stay at college, right? We should have ASAP for, for, for everyone. So, you, so this year, you didn't have a waiting list, but in other years, you do have waiting lists? And how long are those waiting lists?
So, it, it depends on, on which institution it is. I know at Kingsborough, one of the things that we're able to do is roll our students over to the spring semester. Our waiting list typically happens at the end of our enrollment period, when, you know, we're closing off registration. So, it's students coming like after the first day of classes. And at that point, it's not the best way to engage students and get them to really get the true benefits of what we're going to be able to provide. So, they're usually moved to either the spring semester or the fall semester. Typically, they're coming outside of our enrollment window.
And with, and regarding the advertisement and the outreach, so it sounds like you have both broad advertisement and direct outreach. And do you do any work to, or are you cognizant of particular groups of, of people or populations that have historically been, been left behind? Or, or where you try to bridge those gaps? For example, you know, black and brown college students, black men, students with disabilities. Do you do specific targeted outreach to them to try to close those achievement gaps?
Yes. This, this was part of one of our more recent campaigns with Kingsborough. We were specifically targeting black and brown students. So, because one of the things that we saw with our, our graduation data is that we were able to close some of those achievement gaps for black and brown males. So, we were intentionally focused on recruiting more of those students. So, we created a campaign that would allow us to get into communities where, you know, minority students lived and encourage them to connect with our program. Also, when they got into the program, we created programming to make sure that they stayed, connecting them with academic advisors that understood, you know, the challenges that they are going through in terms of being in college, helping them to connect with resources on campus that would help them to work through whatever difficulties they were encountering so that we could get them to the point of graduation.
I do want to announce we've been joined by Councilmember Oswald Felice. Thank you. So, in, in the test, I mean, it's very clear this program is very successful. It meets all the, the benchmarks. And I, I think it was in one of the testimony, we were, or you were looking at ways to, you know, increase the success of the program. But it seems that the, the success criteria has remained rather constant throughout the year. So, it's, you know, it's been, what are 50% will graduate within three years. Has there been discussion in changing the criteria? Maybe a sort of, you know, even a challenge to yourself to say, "We're going to get 40% in three years and 10% in two years," or 60% in three years? I mean, do you ever change the, the criteria for those purposes? Up the ante, so to speak?
So, I would say that we're, we're pretty committed to maintaining our 50% three-year graduation as a primary benchmark. We know that students benefit from timely degree completion. We know that most of our students will go on to transfer and pursue their baccalaureate degree. We know that timely degree completion has very positive gains in terms of efficient use of their financial aid resources. So, essentially, I think that we, we look at our benchmarks and maintain them and strive to achieve them, and we look at them in a way wherein we understand the, the gaps, meaning where we're falling short. And we, we look at that for the purposes of adjusting our program practices, making sure that we look at that data, disaggregate that data, see how certain subgroups within our population of students are performing comparative to that benchmark data so that we can be responsive programmatically.
I just want to add that the answer is, we've been talking about it very recently. I actually had a meeting with somebody from M D R C because we want to make sure that if we change anything, it's a pilot, and we're not necessarily changing it for the program because the program has been so successful that we would not want to make a change without researching first, which is why I mentioned, like, if we could pilot and talking to M D R C about what would that look like? Because we, we want to maintain efficacy, but are there things that we can do to capture the other students that are not enrolling in the program and the older students? And so, we want to tweak it very systematically and ensuring that we continue, providing the support and success for students. We would never want to do something and then, five years from now, the data indicate that that change had a negative impact.
I mean, well, the question wasn't, maybe I didn't articulate it well. The question really wasn't about changing your model. The question was more about your internal success criteria. It was how do, how do you measure success? And you've been succeeding with the same benchmark for, I mean, since the inception of the program. I mean, it's, there's, there is no doubt. And so, I think the question is really internally, are you discussing not changing the services you're providing, not changing the supports you're giving, but really changing internally the, the rubric? The rubric for success, much as we do in the classroom, right? If a student is starting to achieve, you know, you make it a little, either make it a little more challenging for them or up the ante for them so they can achieve more, which is what I think we're, we're trying to do with the program. So, it was really more about internal benchmarks, not changing the program.
I think if we did that, we would still do it as a pilot, just to make sure that, we'd want to analyze what exactly would it take if we wanted to change that benchmark to something higher, per se. We would want to pilot it because it would, it might potentially require that we change some type of the service. And so, that's the conversation, and we have some promising conversations with M D R C about that. But I, I don't think we would change it across the board.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think we all agree. The goal should always be to strive better for our students. So, the, if you were, I want to ask just quickly, go back and forth, but about money. Can you repeat how much you would need at the current campuses to provide ASAP for all students?
It would be an additional $126,240,556 to capture all community college students.
All, for all of the campuses?
Yep.
And what about for the ones where ASAP currently is housed? If you expanded, let's say, at Kingsborough, the, the number of students?
That's the number. It would be at all of the community colleges. So, right now, what we did to capture that figure is we took the total enrollment across all community colleges where there's ASAP and deducted the 25,000 and then multiplied that by cost per student.
What are your hopes for getting that in the state budget coming up?
We're optimists.
You have to be optimist. So, do you, so during the preliminary budget hearing and during your testimony, you stated that CUNY enjoys cost savings from ASAP because, you know, the students graduate quicker, et cetera. And how much does CUNY save? You, you mentioned how much they save per student. How much do they save total last year because of the timely graduation? How much did CUNY save as a result of this program?
I don't have it for one particular year.
Okay, you have it for an average, or you have it?
Yeah, I'm looking, I'm trying to read through my testimony to find where that sentence was. I'm sorry, yep. An average of $6,500 per graduate. And so, I didn't do the math with the total number of graduates.
So, over the course of the three years, or two years, maybe? Maybe people graduated in two years? Or three years, it's $6,500? And, okay. And, and over that time, how many students are there?
88,000.
So, 88,000? Is that the, is that the math?
Sorry, that's, that's the total number of students served since the inception of the program, not necessarily graduated.
Okay, okay. Well, we'll do the math later. But, but I think it's certainly helpful in terms of, you know, these budgetary questions. In a year, on average, how much money we're actually saving by investing in these programs? I mean, you do have good, again, you have, you have good data. And then, the year-to-year numbers are also, also very helpful. So, and during the preliminary budget hearing, it was also mentioned that compounded budget cuts of $50 million have had deep impacts on CUNY programs. Can you describe how these reductions have affected CUNY's ability to run ASAP? And how has CUNY ensured the quality of this program despite the reductions?
So, we have had the benefit, benefit of keeping our ASAP's budget whole over the course of the past few years. Of course, we've been able to realize some substantial savings in the ways of under-enrollment and also personnel vacancies. So, our offerings were, were not necessarily diluted. I think there was an interim of time when the shutdown took place where we did pull back on certain student financial resources, like the MetroCard. We did tailor, tailor back or modify down some of the support, say, in the intercession when we knew that there was kind of a lighter take-up on those items. But we, we certainly never adjusted the, the program's services wholesale. We made modifications. And again, we realized savings due to vacancies because we weren't maximizing enrollment. Whenever advisor vacancies were, say, to come online due to transition or what have you, we wouldn't backfill those vacancies just because, again, we're trying to maximize, maximize that caseload ratio of 150. So, I would say that, you know, we, again, were able to realize some, some savings because of under enrollment, essentially.
And recognizing that the state budget hasn't passed, you know, but the city budget, certainly the mayor's proposed those, those pegs, do you anticipate having to cut back on this program?
So, in, in terms of anticipation, I think that we always keep in mind ways that we can maximize efficiencies. So, again, that, that looks, we try to always stay away from reducing student supports, financial resources, and those financial supports the program offers. There's a way to make slight modifications to realize some savings. There's other personnel choices we can make in terms of pulling back, say, in our part-time staffing allocation. So, I think we have prepared some scenarios where we could modify our operational budget in, in the event of a budget cut.
I would say that we are planning for the enrollment of 25,000 students and actively recruiting under the assumption that we would receive full funding, but well aware that if there was a cut, some services might have to change. But we are cautiously optimistic that won't be the case.
Yeah, man, for a, for a program that helps students graduate and then saves money and produces economic output, I would hate to see a program like this cut. I would love to see it expanded. And just one, and just one tiny thing on the, on the MetroCards. I think I mentioned this at the preliminary budget, but, you know, we have New York City Fairfares. Is that something, are you bearing the cost of MetroCards? Or are your counselors helping eligible students enroll in Fairfares and sort of offsetting some of the costs of the ASAP program?
Right, we, we do shoulder the full cost per student of MetroCard benefits. These are semester-based unlimited cards that we provide to our students that have a value range of just over $1,000 per student per year. So, we, we do not kind of cross-share with, with Fairfares necessarily.
Why? I mean, it's, it's a, it's a city program, the city pays for it. Why wouldn't the counselors in the ASAP program help students apply for the, the benefits that are available from the government, much like I, it sounds like they do with SNAP and, and housing benefits? Why wouldn't they do the same with MetroCards?
I think you can speak to that more on like the operational complexities of why that is.
So, some of these benefits, it takes a while for students to become eligible for it and for them to actually get it in hand and start using it. First is, you know, the ASAP benefit, which is available to them the first day of classes. Many of our students can't make it to campus if we don't give them this MetroCard on their first day. They, they make that very clear to us when they come for, like, an engagement event or something along those lines. They don't have any means of getting back home. So, one of the things that, you know, the ASAP benefit does, it makes this MetroCard benefit readily available to students. Not to say that, you know, we don't want to engage in helping students to apply for this benefit, but there is like a delay in terms of them actually getting access to it and getting it in their hands. And we don't actually get our students in front of us until, you know, they're actually on campus and ready to take classes.
All right, I, I mean, I would imagine that if a student's with the ASAP program for three years, that perhaps for the first period of time, I think that's great, getting those MetroCards right in their hand right away. But I would also imagine it would be an incredible cost savings for your program where you can perhaps have more students or provide more robust programming if you utilize all of the services. And, and I, I think in our budget response, we actually tried to increase eligibility for, for the Fairfares program, which means perhaps more students would be eligible for the Fairfares program. And I highly encourage that you all and anyone who's, who touches ASAP to utilize all of the programming. You know, we fight very hard in the city for these programs like Fairfares, and it would be an incredible opportunity for our students and for the ASAP program if they took full advantage of them. I, I want to turn it over now to Councilmember Brewer.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. And I have to say, I was here when it started with John, and it's a great program. So, we need to not only fund it, but obviously, we'd love to have more funding. So, my question is, I know you said 50% graduate in three years, and I know that you're still working to see on a careful evaluation if there's something more that can be done. But I'm wondering, because it is such a robust program, are there pieces that could, that you think could enhance it that would get more people to participate and graduate? So, you moved it up to 60 or 70%. I, I don't, I'm asking because I don't know.
So, I, I think that we, we look carefully at kind of the proportion of students we serve relative to the CUNY population. So, as was noted in the testimony, we support about 42% of the full-time associate-degree-seeking population across CUNY. We do a funnel analysis, looking back at, at past falls. This past fall, we recognized that 36% of that associate-degree-seeking population were enrolled full-time, or I'm sorry, part-time, thereby, they were not eligible for the program. We also know that about 12% of those students were in majors that we, we do not currently support within ASAP. So, again, we're, we're always looking at these areas of opportunity. I think in A B C Elvero's testimony, this, this note of how we can do more looking at other populations of students and applying the model within those populations is an area for growth.
So, the 50% who don't get through in three years, do they get through in five years? Or what's the number that they get, or is there any number that they get through in? I know some who are not in ASAP used to get through in 10 or 20 years on some cases.
That's true.
But what is the number, or do you have any average for those who are not in that 50% cohort?
And in terms of where we see retention drop off of those, those students? I mean, I think that we know, you know, based on historical analysis, that first to second semester retention is where, where the cliff is. I think that many students-
Second semester, okay.
Yes, first to second semester retention. That's where students start and then might have to drop back to part-time enrollment, might have to make other choices in terms of entering the workforce. So, I, I know that there is this kind of criticalness of that first semester for our new students in the ways in which they're able to engage in the program and build that relationship with their academic advisor.
Go to high schools to talk about this great program? Is that what you do?
Absolutely.
And particularly maybe targeting high schools where, you know, male, et cetera? That's what you do?
Certainly. Well, well, we do know that 70% of our, our incoming population of ASAP students are first-time freshmen flowing in from our, our-
But a lot of women, I love women, but there's a lot, you know.
We can definitely do better.
We need more men.
Absolutely.
I know I'm not supposed to say that. The other question I have is, just in terms of evaluation, because it's so important, what criteria does, it's manpower that does it? We said M D R, I don't know.
So, M D R C has conducted our most rigorous evaluation in R C T, which is-
And that's manpower development. And that's manpower development, whatever. What is it called? What does it stand for? I can never remember. M D R C.
It was a development corporation. I can't remember the acronym, I'm sorry, but yes.
I think it's manpower. Anyway, long story short, what criteria did they look at? Is it just graduation? What do they look at when they're doing the evaluation? Do you have a sense?
So, M D R C's RCT evaluation looked at the full kind of trajectory in terms of semester-to-semester retention, credits attempted and earned, again, progress towards degree, and ultimately to two and a half and three-year graduation. We conduct that analysis in-house, though with a less rigorously constructed comparison group. As we've served more continuing and transfer students within the program, having that matched comparison group of students has become a little bit more administratively challenging on that, you know, for our quasi-experimental designs that we conduct in-house on our team. But we look at the same features in terms of academic progress, that semester-to-semester retention, credits accumulated, and of course, engagement.
Do all campuses, I should know this, I know BMCC has childcare. Do all campuses have childcare? And if they don't, is that something that this program pays for?
So LaGuardia and BMCC are two programs that have a specific relationship with their childcare centers wherein we have a kind of a prioritization in the way in which our students can access those supports. In terms of capacity across other, I know that that's an area of need and capacities...
That's what I'm asking.
Is reduced.
It helps you get through.
Exactly, exactly.
So that's, it's not part of the, at Kingsborough?
It's not necessarily a part of the program.
So no, if I have a child whose childcare age and I wanted to go to Kingsborough, I'd have to find my own childcare. Is that what you're saying?
Well, you can apply for the childcare at the campus, but it's on a first-come, first-served basis because they only have a limited capacity.
So it's not ASAP doesn't get priority?
No.
Okay, all right. And then my final question is, I heard this very large number for being across the board, but I would love to see it, just elect to see the libraries open all the time, et cetera, et cetera. What do you, I mean, I guess what I'm saying is, my suggestion would be to try to keep these evaluations as public as possible because they are excellent, because I do think you should be aiming for the money to do it across the board. I guess Goodman, is Goodman the only, I know I was there when that was founded, I was there when everything was founded. Was this Goodman the only community college that's not in the program?
Correct, that's right.
Okay, because they do have childcare. That's what I was asking too.
I see.
All right, and that's the only one that's not in the program?
Correct. All of our associate degree institutions offer ASAP with the exception of Goodman.
Okay, all right. So do you think there is enough evaluation material to do more publicity about it? And do you get some private grants based on good evaluation? That's my other question.
Yeah, I see your point, and in terms of making our well-known evidence base more public, I think a lot of local, state, and federal policymakers do some of that work for us.
The hell with the local, state policymakers. I'm talking about, like, big foundations as well as, but you don't go for private grants for this program? You do not?
So we do supplement our work with some private funding. Well, for ACE, which is, I know, not part of this hearing, but of course that was, has been mobilized through the support of philanthropy. We raise funding for our national replication work, meaning that we support other institutions and state systems to replicate the model with a high level of fidelity. That's also been studied by M D R C in terms of applying a rigorous evaluation to ensure that this model, again, when implemented with a high level of fidelity...
You get intellectual property money for doing the replication?
I'm sorry, say that again.
You get intellectual property money for doing the replication?
We operate on a fee-for-service model, which directly feeds the staff who then support the provision of technical assistance. So we do not license our materials in such a way. It's more of kind of a service in the spirit of advancing completion across the country.
You should think that way. All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. I do think some of the big foundations you should be approaching. You're not, you're not going to Robinhood, you're not going to...
So Robinhood supports our ACE work primarily, and I would say we also, again, receive support more recently from Morgan Stanley Foundation, which supplements our career development work within CUNY ASAP. So they support us to sponsor events and do things that otherwise tax levy funds make it more difficult to do.
And I don't know if this is the answer, but how much private funding do you get for ASAP?
For ASAP?
For ASAP, yeah.
So in this past fiscal year, just for ASAP excluding ACE, I would say somewhere in the realm of $3 million this last fiscal year.
And do you, I mean, do you have grant writers and people whose job it is to, you know, try to get money?
I'm sorry, say that again.
Do you have people whose job it is, grant writer seems of that nature to try...
Oh, no, I would say I do most of the grant writing.
$3 million, that's a pretty good job. But I imagine there are, you know, private organizations out there who want to invest in the success of our students and quite frankly, create a pool of applicants for their own, you know, for their own organizations and their own businesses. And has that ever been discussed about what kind of work is done for private fundraising? Or has most of the work been trying to create and uplift this program with all public funds?
Yes, I would say that we utilize the public fund lines to support, well, let me put this in broader perspective. Of our total city-funded budget, 95% is deployed out to our colleges who implement the program. 5% is retained, I would say, as overhead to support our central office staff, a small carve-out, I guess, proportionally. So, yes, we try to ensure that this money flows directly to support implementation as a primary focus. Is that answering your question?
Yeah.
You're the best program in New York. You've got to publicize it. You've got to tell more people about it and the success. I'm just saying.
Yes, I appreciate that.
And I do think in our society, as the chair was saying, with the businesses are desperate for your wonderful students, you know, it's got to have more presence in our city. Suggestion?
Okay, thank you.
Get John out of retirement, get him talking. Thank you.
I would just add, in my meeting with M D R C, they said the same exact thing, and last week sent me a list of funders, so, yeah, great minds.
Call up, they just need to be asked. Could throw around a million dollars here and there, but, you know, but these are real dollars that can help a lot expand it on each of the campuses. And in your discussions about funding, whether it's public or private, are you discussing expanding this program to more of your colleges? Or is the goal really to ensure that more students at the colleges where it already exists have the opportunity for this program?
So this program is specifically targeting associate degree students, and so it's at all the colleges that offer an associate degree, other than Goodman. Goodman is the one that is a very tiny community college, and their advisement system is modeled, has a lot of the components of ASAP already. So only some of our four years are comprehensive, which means they offer associate degrees, but our senior colleges don't offer associate degrees.
So there's no school that offers an associate's degree that does not have ASAP?
Correct, other than Goodman.
That for Goodman?
Correct.
Yeah, we don't talk about Goodman.
That's right, yep.
Okay. I wrote it down somewhere. That is it for my questioning. I want, I want to thank all of you for coming and for your testimony today about an incredible program. It is something that we absolutely need to invest more in, and there are certainly steps that CUNY can take to make this program more successful and more cost-efficient, including utilizing our Fairfare system here in New York and reaching out to the private donors who can really do some of the financial work to really expand this program to more students who really need it here in New York City. Thank you, and in a moment I'll be calling up the next panel. I'm going to call up the next panel, and if I mispronounce your name, first I apologize, and I would just ask that you correct me. I would like for Penny Lewis, Berkis Cruz Usebio, and Matthew Arenz to please come Thank you. You don't need to be sworn in, but again, please state your name for the record, and of course, correct me if I mispronounce any of your names. And can we start with Berkis Cruz Usebio?
Yes, you pronounced it well. I'm Berkis Cruz Usebio, good afternoon.
You can begin with your testimony.
Well, good afternoon. I'm Berkis Cruz Usebio, I'm at Hostos Community College, I'm an ASAP staff member. So I have a hybrid role here because I'm also a PSC member. And I'm here because I want, not to justify the existence of the ASAP program, but to really reassure you that through my 16 years as ASAP as well, I have seen how well this program works, including in one of my children. I have to correct my testimony because I'm not the only one in ASAP that has been for 16 years. Dr. Manifol has been here too, but I'm the only career specialist that's been in ASAP through the 16 years. So I see this program grown from where my caseload was 100 students to 900 and something with increasing. ASAP is a program that has proven that is effective. It has been replicated in one county and six other states. I'm part of the ASAP replication expert team that helps in parts of the career specialist role. And I feel like we are the glue that really will help ASAP really expand in the sense that we prepare our students to be competent, to be able to gain, obtain gainful employment, to conduct themselves, and to be able to use their critical thinking and analytical skills in situations that some of them has mastered already through their life experiences alone. I'm sure you have heard that we service the poorest students in the nation, that our students don't come prepared to college, that they have a ton of barriers, including the childcare. However, I believe that they are entitled to an education just like any other person who comes from a richer family. Education, in my view, should not be seen as a privilege. And the cost of supporting programs like ASAP should be seen as an investment because ASAP services 25,000 students that I have helped work with and continue to in collaboration with all of the other components of ASAP, that when I think about it in my very simplistic approach, which everybody knows me by, I wonder, these are 25,000 potential taxpayers, not benefits-dependent citizens. And that's what, in my view, ASAP really offers to our students, the possibility to break out from the poverty cycle and to be able to possibly be the first one in their family to ever be in college and complete a degree, which is the important part also. It's a motivational program that offers the opportunity for them to shine, to be part of something positive for the change in the city, something that works, that offers them reliable support and loyalty as you're an ASAP, once you're an ASAP, you're always an ASAP. And they know that, at least at Hostos, my motto with them is always, when things go wrong in the world, come back home. Come, reach out to one of us. We offer services that typically will not be offered to the general population at community colleges because they don't have the funding that is required. But we see the results in them. For instance, I have a very dear person that came to me as a non-English speaking, recent immigrant who was working in a bakery burning her hands. She didn't speak English, she was receiving benefits, and she came to work voluntarily through the benefits program. After multiple failures in a certain test at CUNY that were in the past, she passed and became part of ASAP. We helped her by giving her a part-time position through the work-study program, and then she became a college assistant. Through the increasing funding, we were able to get somebody to work one-on-one with me. Well, this young lady really excelled. Her name is Arela Espina, and I believe you have some written testimony from her. And she became my right hand, my left hand, and my brain as a college assistant in my area. I'm very proud to say that she accomplished her associate's degree with a 3.8 GPA and completed her in 2019. She completed her bachelor's degree. Now is a full-time staff member who owns, is in the process of owning her house in a matter of six years.
GPA's better than mine, I think.
That's what I call upper mobility.
I thought GPA's better than mine. I shouldn't have done ASAP.
And that's only one story. And I'm bringing hers because hers probably is in writing in her testimony. I'm not sure she's going to be able to testify online.
We'll be sure to read the testimony. I want to make sure our other witnesses have an opportunity to speak, so I'd like to hear from Dr. Lewis next, please.
Thank you.
Thanks, Berkis. So, good afternoon, nice to see you. Thank you for having this hearing. I'm Penny Lewis, the Secretary of the Professional Staff Congress and a faculty member at the School of Labor and Urban Studies. And I also used to teach at Burr Manhattan Community College, and I was there, actually, when the ASAP program was first introduced, so also know firsthand about the success of the program. I'm here really speaking on behalf of the union, first thanking the council for its strong support of CUNY in its response to the cuts that are being threatened by the mayor's budget. And we have a long way to go before the budget is adopted, and our union will be fighting all the way through to get the funding that it needs. And we are here specifically because of the funding that ASAP desperately needs and deserves. As you know, it's a nationally recognized program. We've heard a lot about its fantastic strengths today and why people have sought to emulate it across the country, and its incredible success rates that we've heard about today, the double the graduation rate. And we've heard a little bit about the analysis that shows that the graduation gaps for Black and Hispanic males, you know, are reduced, et cetera, really fantastic statistics. And Chair Dinowitz, you asked why this can't be, why can't everything be ASAP? And we feel exactly the same way. Every single CUNY student should have the comprehensive wraparound support services that ASAP provides.
They should just call it college.
So, but we know, and we've heard, it requires much more investment in order for that to be the case, which is why we fight constantly for more money and full funding for CUNY because we cannot realize ASAP for all until we have, you know, the money that we need. So you're hearing from colleagues and students today, but I'd like to just highlight two areas, ooh, quickly. We've already heard this is an investment. We know that CUNY students give back $4.2 billion in state taxes, you know, yearly, so every penny that goes to CUNY students comes back to New York. And ASAP is proof that full funding is key to CUNY's, to student's success. The high retention and completion rates of the ASAP program are due in large part to the resources that they devote to advisement. So the $35.5 million in the council's budget response will help ASAP, and the programs like it to expand, by hiring 264 additional advisors. And we need advisors everywhere, obviously, but because so many ASAP students are in the first generation of their families to attend college, advisors are essential in helping students navigate our large university system. And I would just stress, if I just can just take a little bit more, that you all were speaking about the private funding, and, you know, I appreciate and agree that ASAP is phenomenal and deserves funding from every stream. However, it's essential that this funding be public. It's a public good, it needs to be accountable to our city, to our taxpayers, to our students, not to boards of foundations and programs like that. And these cuts that are being proposed are completely self-defeating. CUNY testified to the fact that they were able to absorb the cuts through savings, but it was not mentioned there was a hiring freeze, and a lot of the vacancies that were able to provide, you know, savings, were there because of a hiring freeze. And it has meant that the caseloads for our advisors have skyrocketed, including the advisors, you know, who serve inside of the ASAP... you know, who serve inside of the ASAP program in career counseling and things like that. So additional cuts can't be tolerated and we really appreciate the support that the council is showing to ASAP and CUNY as a whole.
Absolutely. And in fact, in our council's preliminary budget response, we did respond by saying we need more investment in advisors. They're critical to student achievement and success, both in the classroom and outside the classroom. This is a council that is, you know, fully aligned with those values. Okay. And last, you have Matthew Arendz.
Yes. So I go to City Tech and I'm also ASAP's and it's been such a blessing to be in that, between the advisors and just everyone there. It's been such a whole blessing coming out of COVID and knowing what I, what I want to do. This, I believe that, as you said, every student should have the chance to be in the, in it because it can help so many in the future. Between the MetroCards, the advisors with their courses, because, because I even was one to say, what should I take and what should I not take? And it's just been, it's just been a pure, a pure happiness in my life. It concerns me about the mayor's cuts to the whole system. It concerns for ASAP to have, to have cuts and then just for the overall CUNY system. Thank you.
Matthew, thank you so much. I always forget to mention this, I don't know why. I was a CUNY student. I got my graduate degree at Hunter and I was, I was in a program and we had this benefit of having an advisor who says, you need to take these classes, make sure you take these classes, these are the time that they're available and really guided us through. And I, I'm sure I would not have completed grad school if not for the advisor.
It can just be really frustrating to say, take this one class and then your advisor says, no, don't listen to that, take this class. Like, I could feel like a chicken without a head, like going back and forward between this course and this course. It's just been pure, this whole, this whole overall.
And, you know, it's sort of silly. We have advisement in our careers and in jobs. I can't tell you how much outreach I've gotten for pension consultations and here are your health benefits and enroll in this retirement. We get these sorts of things. As a teacher, I got outreach from the UFT and DEE about salary steps and about professional development. There's no reason why every single student who's going to eventually go into a career shouldn't get the exact same supports. Matt, how did you find out about the ASAP program?
I saw it both on the train and then also during my, my, of the orientation. And now the, I will be honest, like the grab they had was the whole idea of the free, the free MetroCards because it's, it's the best to save $2.75 going both ways to school and back, and back. But then also the idea that I can have someone help me choose my career in the future.
You should have seen Alicia's smile behind you. That's the, oh, we're doing the advertisement right, we're doing the recruitment right. If there, and I'm going to ask this of all of you, we know ASAP's a great program, but we're always striving to make it better. If there were one thing about ASAP that you can change or that you can make better, what would it be? No one wants to, no one wants to say first.
I think I would just have to say, if, for, if, I know it would probably be like not possible, but I think the best thing would be is if every student, regardless of their backgrounds, if they can have the chance to be in the, to be in it, because also with the tuition assistance, not every student has the best background with their, their housing or their, or any economic ideas.
Thank you, Matthew.
If there's one thing that I would change about ASAP, we will definitely be, the number of students that we service, I would like to see it bigger. As hardworking as I am and as big as the caseloads are, to be able to really offer the program to every college student, so, because they all deserve the chance.
Yeah, we're all going to say the same thing. I mean, when I was, I mean, when I was at BMCC, I will say, we had, all of us who were not in the ASAP program, and at that time, and I don't know if this is still the case, there were like cohorts, like the students who were in ASAPS were always traveling with a cohort. And the idea was you got to know the students inside of your cohort. And we were somewhat jealous and resentful of the fact that not every student got that. You know, so we, we were like, good for ASAP, but look at ASAP with their special office and they have advisors and everybody there has MetroCards. Why doesn't everybody get that? You know, like what's going on here? Why the special program? And what I am very impressed by is the extent to which the successes of ASAP by proving themselves has meant that it has expanded and been reproduced, but it is time for every CUNY student to have those same supports. Like it's just that, it's time for it. And, you know, we've had it, it's been successful for 15 years and it should not be limited to 25,000 students. Every single student in CUNY should have this kind of support and we will see the graduation rates and we will see the successes that we see from ASAP and we will see our enrollment go up because they know they're going to get much more support, you know, in higher ed. So that's, that's what I think.
Yeah, college. College should be. And is, and lastly, I'll ask the, you know, for the professionals doing, doing the work in ASAP, do you feel that you are getting the training that's necessary and the supports you need from, you know, administration or central to actually do this, this critical work that you're doing?
Absolutely. Because it's not possible to service so many students successfully without working as part of a team or in collaboration. So the program has more from the one-on-one focus, at least for career specialist, to a more collaborative model, working hand-in-hand with advisors, collaborating with other campus resources. We try to approach the student as a whole so that if I, as a career specialist, cannot provide financial support to a student that's experiencing an issue with housing, then we can link up to the other departments. And because we build those collaborations, then they can pick up from where we can't help the student. So Central Office offers us a lot of training, opportunities for growth within your career interests, and they constantly evolving and bringing innovation to our approach, like having to switch from a one-on-one intrusive program into a more collaborative way of working with the students with appreciative advisement, using chaos theory in terms of, you know, understanding everything the students face. So in that area, I have no complaints. We have training galore.
We do hearings all the time, whether it's higher education oversight or host of other civil service and labor. And we hear from administration and we hear, you know, the agency and they say, this is the best thing we do. And then you hear from the people doing the work or the people impacted by the work. The administration has no idea what's going on. We often hear that. And it is such a pleasure, not only to hear that this program is doing incredible work, but that every single person, both those doing the work centrally, the people who are on the ground directly helping students and the students receiving the services are all saying the exact same thing, that this program is incredible. It's helpful to me. It's helpful to the very people we got in the job to help. And I couldn't agree with, with administration or with all of you more that this is something that needs more investment because of the human benefits of it. And as was mentioned multiple times, the financial investment. This has been the best interests of all of us, of our families and in New York City as a whole.
Yes.
I want to thank you all for your time and your testimony and I will call up the next panel.
Thank you.
Which is on Zoom. That's Adam. We have a Ms. James on Zoom, a Ms. Achi, and Ms. Barnes, Ms. Barnes Balenciaga. And we'll start with Heather. Starting time.
Good afternoon, Councilmember Dinowitz. How are you? Very nice to see you.
Nice to see you as well.
I won't be duplicative here since so many have said what I want to say, but I just really want to thank you for holding this hearing at this critical time because, you know, the city plays an outsized role in funding the community colleges. And as the budget comes up, we really need to focus on funding the community colleges' most successful programs and doing the best that we can for them. I am, of course, an active PSC member, but I am also a community college professor and I really see the benefits of ASAP with my own students all the time. The advising issue, it could not be more serious because students do take the wrong classes without an advisor and they do drop out because of it. Students don't know how to make that connection between career and college without a counselor. And my students will tell me, I'm not coming to class on Thursday because I get paid on Friday and I don't have money for a MetroCard and I don't want to jump the turnstile. I mean, when you work in this environment, it really, it just, it just goes without saying. So as a member of the PSC, I helped collect some testimony from ASAP advisors who could not be here today. We did submit some of those testimonies as written testimony, so hopefully you'll have them. But I just wanted to highlight something that was said to me by one of our advisors. She said, she started working for ASAP and they were able to provide numerous activities for students, including trips, career fairs. ASAP's sections of classes were smaller and they had meetings with professors. They had orientations with outside groups and numerous campus activities to really provide that cohort experience. And some of those things unfortunately have had to be rolled back because of budget cuts. You know, we've mentioned the staffing issues with not being able to fill vacancies. ASAP, my colleagues, I mean, they work so hard to keep that 50% graduation rate, no matter what's happening with the program. But, you know, we have to remember not to erode its success and to really be faithful to what the program was supposed to be and what it still is and really try to keep it there. So I just want to say that, you know, we really appreciate the council's support in this budget cycle and absolutely, if we can get to ASAP for all, we want that more than anything. And let's make sure we don't erode the program as well. All right. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. James. Next, we have Ms. Achi.
Starting time.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Mary Achi. I'm in aluminum of the Young Invisibles Advocate Program. I want to thank the New York Council, City Council, for the opportunity to testify at today's hearing. I'm here to share my support for the ASAP program at CUNY. We all agree college is hard. It greatly affects our mental, physical and financial skills. College can be challenging, balancing coursework and extracurriculars, activities and jobs. And college students have a lot on their plate. One of the struggles a college student faces is the financial burden. Many, many students takes on debts to pay for tuition, room and board and textbooks. The debts can impact a student's finances and well after graduation and making it difficult to establish themselves in the years to come. Additionally, the cost of college can make it difficult for students to pursue their passions as they may be forced to choose a more financially stable career rather than the seeking their own dream jobs. Established in 2007, the City University of New York ASAP program provides comprehensive support services to low-income students intending to help them complete their associate degrees as quickly as possible. The program has incredibly been successful with students enrolling in it and graduating at more than the people that are not in the program. I'm currently a Law Warrior student and I am active in the ASAP program. Being a person who recently became a US citizen, this program has helped me deeply. I have received MetroCards, which has helped my commute to school, textbooks, a tuition waiver, which have left me debt-free and tutoring on our subjects, which has helped me in classes and understanding the materials. When I started Law Warrior, I was undecided, but with the academic counseling is where I met my advisor who helped me on choosing what classes is best for my major, talk about any issues I have for the day and making me choose the right career path. One more thing that I love about the ASAP program is that they offer workshops, like LinkedIn workshops, resume, interviews and even internships. Such benefits makes college less stressful and worry-free and makes you focus more on studying and understanding, understanding better. With the ASAP program, I know what to do and I know some of the students feel the same way. The ASAP program is an extra hand I didn't know I needed. One of the impressive aspects of the ASAP program is that it is not only helping students complete their degrees, but is also helping them achieve greater success after graduation. ASAP graduates has earned high salaries and achieved higher educational attainment than their peers and did not participate in the program. In conclusion, the ASAP program is an important initiative that can impact college students' lives by increasing graduation rates and providing students with the support they needed to succeed. The program is helping, the program is helping ensure that every student can achieve their full potential. And if you're a student, I highly encourage you to consider becoming a member of the ASAP program and taking advantage of the resources and support. And thank you for your time.
Thank you so much for your testimony. And last in this panel, we have Jennifer Barnes Balenciaga. Balenciaga?
Starting time.
Good afternoon, everyone. Such a pleasure to be here. I am a student currently at BMCC. I'm actually in class at this moment, but I felt it was important to make my presence known and also speak about the program. As a person who was a peer impact mentor, I've been able to navigate and help other people understand about the program for specifically ASAP, helping other people, being a student that, you know, 3.0 plus and graduating this spring 2023. It's been a pleasure to see the other students around the campus give this type of support and work. Being a woman of trans experience has especially been wonderful because I've been able to help other trans individuals get enrolled into school. And these programs are super helpful, especially for those below the poverty line, as we know in New York. I am able to be a science student, so it is in my nature to be very concerned about what the next moves are to make sure that there's equitable within the ability to gain acceptable educational experience within a huge metropolitan city like New York. So I wanted to make sure that I took the time to come to the space and also give my kudos to the entire ASAP team here at BMCC and at the community colleges across the New York spectrum. So thank you so very much.
Thank you, Jennifer. I'm going to ask the same question of you I ended the previous panel with and then I'm going to ask Heather and Mary the same question. Besides expanding this to all people, if there were one element of the program you could change or you can improve upon, what do you think that would be?
And I think it's been said time and time again from the various panelists and those within the chambers, to honestly continue the expansion. I think, I heard a question that you posed earlier in my commute, which was about making some of the credentials for the gainful entry to the program a little more difficult or a little more challenging. And I would certainly advise against that. As we know, the demographics of students within community colleges specifically are that of which has so much against them daily. I know me myself, I've I know me myself, I've heard several times from other people about MetroCards and the ability to gain that. And I would say it is truly going to be a necessary movement to make everything more accessible and to make sure that the funding is allocated to even more people moving forward because the gap of economics here, again, in the city is just constantly expanding. And more people are needing to make sure that they can get to the bachelor programs from community college as well as be able to successfully complete their AAs within community college. So that would be my answer.
Thank you, Jennifer. Mary, Heather, did you want to add to that? Can you unmute Heather?
Thank you for unmeeting me. I will add to that from my professor hat perspective. A couple of things. I mean, the ratios of 1 to 150 for advisors were mentioned a lot of times. That's something that the council also mentioned in their budget response and their support for additional advisors for everyone across CUNY. I think with the vacancy reductions, sometimes it's hard because you create a cohort that's 1 to 150 that you set everything up, as the ASAP folks said. But then if people leave in the middle, you have to kind of like reshuffle things around, but you can't fill the vacancy. So I think in this environment, we just need to be mindful of possible staffing issues. And then I think, you know, just listening to my students, if there's a way to expand the program to part-timers specifically, I know the three-year graduation goal could make that difficult. I have some part-time students who really want to be full-time, but they can't because of their housing benefits or they can't because of the job situation that they have. But they do still have a need for all the services that ASAP provides. I mean, that could be one way to expand without immediately moving to ASAP for all. And I think being able to bring back some of those extracurriculars and those trips that would really help solidify the cohort model and give people more of an introduction to the college experience would be very helpful as well.
Thank you. I don't know if Mary is still on, and if she is, if she'd like to add anything that she would improve upon the program?
Yes. Thank you, Heather and Jennifer. I wanted to add on what you guys both said. I know that I have some friends, college friends, that know that they couldn't apply for the ASAP. They wasn't eligible for the ASAP because of like the majors or like the income. And we both know that, you know, New York is expensive. And, you know, you might be making more on paper on IRS, but it's not coming back for college. And that's what happened to me. My parents, they both filed together. And when the IRS, the FASF saw that, they were like, oh, my parents are making a lot of money, but it's not coming back to me. Like, I'm not getting the benefit of the money because for one, rent is expensive, you know, groceries are expensive, just leaving New York is expensive. So I hope that they make more expansions, include more students, more majors, so that nobody's left out. And, you know, in general, college is hard, is expensive, and we just make sure that everyone is included and everyone can achieve success in the end. Thank you.
Thank you. That wraps up this panel. If we, if we inadvertently, well, we've heard from everyone who's signed up to testify. And if we inadvertently missed anyone who would like to testify virtually, please use the raise hand function in Zoom, and I'll call on you in the order of hand raised. Okay. Seeing no one else, I'd like to note that written testimony, which will be reviewed in full by committee staff, may be submitted to the record up to 72 hours after the close of this hearing by emailing it to testimony@council.nyc.gov. I'd like to thank CUNY and everyone who participated in today's hearing. Today's hearing about ASAP and clearly an incredible program where the data supports it, the finances support it, and the people doing the work and receiving the benefits support this program that really provides the support to our students to help them succeed, the supports that every single student deserves. And I think it is fitting to say that we should continue to push for this program, the program that really just provides a wraparound support for all students until we're able to just call ASAP college. And with that, I close out this hearing.